Good afternoon, welcome to the Town Riverhead Planning Board meeting. Tonight is Thursday, January 19th, 2023. If we could stand for the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any public hearings today. We're going to start with our discussion items, and I'm going to change up the discussion item and bring up Greg Bergman first for HK Ventures, please.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. We are here to discuss the draft supplemental environmental impact statement for the HK Ventures site plan application. It's a site plan application seeking approval to construct approximately 412,000 square feet of industrial space to be divided into individual tenant spaces. There will be a 1,500-square-foot commissary area on-site and related parking, lighting, and landscaping improvements. So this board has been going through the SECRE review on this project now for some time. The latest actions, the applicant had submitted a draft supplemental environmental impact statement that was prepared in response to a positive declaration from the board. The purpose of that draft supplemental was to capture cumulative impacts from other developments and proposed projects in the area that were not studied in either the draft environmental impact statement or the final environmental impact statement. The board accepted that draft supplemental impact statement on December 1st of 2022. It was noticed in the Environmental News Bulletin administered by the DEC on December 14th. SECRE required a minimum 30-day review period for that document, which ended on January 13th. During that review period, we did receive comments on the draft supplemental from members of the public. We received comments from Barbara Glass. We received comments from Taki Turchin. And I did refer those comments to our traffic consultant, Ray DeBias, from L.K. McLean. The comments generally referred to the trip generation counts and the land use codes that were used to study the Riverhead Logistics Center application in terms of the cumulative impacts. I did, it was a significant concern, so I referred them to Ray DeBias, who I do have here on Zoom to answer some of the board's questions and provide any kind of clarification. I mean, in summary, when Mr. DeBias had reviewed the initial draft supplemental, he stated that the proposed trip generation counts from the proposed developments appeared accurate. Upon review of the comments received during the draft supplemental period, he cited additional studies that were done. He referenced the 10th and 11th edition of the ITE, which spoke in greater detail to the trip generations from those proposed developments. I will let him discuss more about that. You know, I'm not a traffic engineer. I won't represent myself to be one. But the general sense is that he stuck by his initial assessment that those trip generation counts did appear accurate. So just in terms of SECRE, what I did, I do have a resolution prepared for the board, which would set forth the requirements for a final supplemental environmental impact statement. Among those would be incorporation of Ms. Glass's comments, Ms. Turchin's comments, the written response from L.K. McLean. By reference, we want them to include the New York State DOT's Transportation Project Report, Final Design Report, from July of 2022. And that's the DOT's design manual for the Edwards Avenue/Middle Country Road redesign. And there were references in the draft supplemental specifically regarding the Riverhead Logistics Center project, mentioning the truck-loading bays on that project. And then, as well as referencing for the HK Ventures project, they are proposing rooftop solar. There was a comment in the draft supplemental that it'll be fed into a community solar program, which Riverhead does not have. So basically, just remove that from the final supplemental EIS, so.
Greg, is this high cube?
So, high cube, as defined by the ITE manual at the Institute of Traffic Engineers, high cube warehousing is defined of a building of at least 200,000 gross square feet of floor area, which has a ceiling height of 24 feet or more, and is used primarily for the storage and/or consolidation of manufactured materials. By any, so even by the ITE land use codes and definitions, HK Ventures would not fall under high cube warehousing. It's a, their site plan proposes eight buildings of approximately 50,000 square feet each, give or take. And those are going to be divided into smaller individual tenant spaces, ranging from 5,000, 10,000 square feet, you know, whatever an individual tenant might need. So even by the ITE's definition, HK Ventures would not fall into the definition of quote "high cube" warehousing.
Thank you.
So, because I do have Ray DeBias here, if the board has any questions, wanted him to kind of go into different land use codes and how he arrived at his conclusion.
Yes, Heather, can we get Mr. Glass on?
Greg, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for attending today. We really appreciate hearing what you have to say and how you can support your, the study that you have done.
Okay. I first want to say thank you, good afternoon, and thank you, Greg. With me is Vin Carrato. Vin and I pretty much do all the traffic, traffic study reviews that we do for municipalities, including this one we've both been involved on a little bit. I will say that Barbara's comments focused on the Riverhead Logistics Center, or also known as North Point, project, which is located pretty much at the end of the Long Island Expressway. As the exact tenant nature of that facility is unknown at this time, because there is no tenant, the trip generation that was estimated by the applicant's traffic engineer is reasonable. The building does have a, is a large building. It has a high ceiling. ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, has trip generation information for various types of land uses. They do not have trip generation for a sorting facility, similar to a place where you might shop online, where they have large last-mile distribution centers on Long Island, where they actually bring tractor-trailers in overnight, sort the packages or, or the incoming packages from the tractor-trailers within the facility, and then distribute them to a lot of vans. At this point, it's premature to speculate on who the exact tenant or tenants of the Riverhead Logistics Center are. It's possible that this could develop into a sorting-type facility, whenever that's proposed, or the tenants identified by the applicant. It's a bit premature at this point to think that that, that's going to happen at the, it might be a sorting facility. So prior to the applicant submitting a formal application, I guess, or actually identifying the tenant, we would want to know before, you know, if we're involved in reviewing the traffic study, which, which I think we might be for that facility, we would want to know, you know, is this a sorting facility? There's some options that you have if it is, and there's some thoughts we have about it. If it is a sorting facility, similar to a place where you do mail order and they sort packages and then distribute them using tractor-trailers coming in overnight and then vans during the day to distribute the packages in a bunch of different directions from the facility, we would suggest and, and have the applicant investigate direct access to the Long Island Expressway. Their site is located adjacent to State Rightof Way for the expressway that was actually purchased decades ago, with the thought that the expressway would someday be extended further east. So they have the option, or they have the, with a, with a sorting facility, the most desirable thing with a large number of trucks and vans involved would be to provide direct access to those expressway ramps at exit 73, the exit for County Road 58. So there's some, there's a way of doing that. The property exists. We do not, would not want to see extensive traffic from that facility brought out to Route 25 opposite the Splish Splash entrance, which already has some capacity problems in the summertime when Splish Splash is active. So the applicant would need to pursue that with New York State Department of Transportation and actually with the federal government, because any time an interchange on an interstate highway is modified, the federal government has to approve what they call an interchange modification report. This was done for the large Yap Hank Meadows project on the northwest corner of the LIE, William Floyd Parkway Interchange, when some ramps were constructed to service roads and the interchange was modified. So the federal government had to be involved in that as well. So that being said, because it's so premature, we would have to just use existing information and just estimate the traffic for that facility. The, of course, HK Ventures, as Greg mentioned, is not large enough. It's, it's individual buildings. It's not of a, of a layout in terms of the site that would eventually turn into a sort of, a sorting facility of the nature I'm talking about. So that would be off the table for HK Ventures. Now, it would also be desirable both for HK and, and for any other large facility in the area that the state's improvements, as Greg mentioned, for Edwards Avenue and Route 25, the proposed improvements, which, last time I checked, are currently scheduled for a contract letting at the end of this year with construction in early '24. It would be, who've, any large development that, that is in place, the improvements at that intersection. Just quickly, the improvements consist of adding left-turn lanes on all approaches to the intersections, realigning Edwards Avenue so that you don't have that little jog as you cross Route 25, which is a, a safety issue, and it's, it's difficulty trying to see if you're trying to make a left turn coming off of Edwards. That project is, is actually, that intersection's included in a project that covers three intersections, which again is supposed to be led by the state this fall. So that was, that was the background of the, you know, the response to Barbara's memo, which had the most significant traffic comments on the supplemental traffic impact study. Also, we have actually reviewed multiple last-mile facilities for Amazon. There is one that just was recently constructed at Gabreski Airport. There is one that Vin, who's with me, reviewed in Syosset, a large facility off the expressway in Syosset. In the Gabreski one, which I reviewed, I worked with the town to make sure that when the project was approved, there were conditions in there to require a supplemental traffic study. So the facility is very, very large. There were many predictions about when the peak hours would be, with the statement made by the applicant that the peak hours would not coincide with the roadway peak hours. So they would be during off-peaks during the day, when vans would come in and out and deliver packages, and at night, when tractor-trailers would, would visit the site and unload. So we said, and we worked in conjunction with the town planning department, we said, let's, let's specify that once this facility is fully occupied and fully functional, let a supplemental traffic study be done to see if the predicted traffic is actually what they, the traffic levels are actually what they predicted in the traffic study. So in a large facility of, you know, sorting facility, if this ever develops, for the, for the Riverhead Logistics Site, we would, you know, recommend to the town that that also be done in this case.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for your time today. It's much appreciated.
Okay. All right. So like I said, we do have a resolution here, which would set forth the requirements of that final supplemental. SECRE process would continue. The board would then have to review the final supplemental, accept it, and there would have to be a public review period. I think the SECRE requires a minimum of 10 days before the board could make a finding statement on the HK Ventures. And again, I, I understand a lot of that conversation with Ray revolved around Riverhead Logistics Center, but I, I think it's important, while you, you have to understand impacts from both projects, to not conflate the two. I mean, they are separated by quite a distance. Again, most tra, most traffic going or to or from that Riverhead Logistics Center site would generally be centered around 25 and Splish Splash Drive. The common intersection that the board felt would be appropriate that would bear any kind of common impact was New York 25 and Edwards Avenue. So that was the intersection that was captured in that supplemental. Really all we got, one guy saying.
Okay.
All righty.
I know you've done a lot of work on this. Thank you.
Yes, very, very aware of this application as well as others.
Yes.
Thank you.
You've spent hours and hours and hours and hours speaking about this, so. Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to RH Hampton's LLC with Matt Charters, please. Oh, the Verizon, sorry. Switched to first. Okay, Heather Trojanowski.
Heather, yes. I was at a joint.
We're going to do Verizon Wireless Riverhead 3 Jamesport Firehouse.
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Heather Trojanowski, site plan reviewer, and I do have a representative for the application here with me today, just standing.
Craig Zonin, the Model Load Group, on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
All right. So another cell tower application. The planning department received an application seeking to make modifications to an existing public utility wireless communications facility. It's improved with an 80-foot, 6-inch-tall monopole, equipment shelters, and paths of other wireless carriers. And it's located at the Jamesport Fire Department, which is at 25 Manor Lane in Jamesport, within the Hamlet Center zoning use district, and the tax map number is 600-68-2-9.10. Subject parcel is 1.1 acres in size and is located on the west side of Manor Lane, approximately 150 feet north of Main Road, presently improved with a two-story firehouse, parking lot, and then the wireless communications facility. We do have the owner's endorsement. It was submitted with the application, which was signed by the chairman of the fire, of the Jamesport Fire District Board of Fire Commissioners, and that authorized the performance of the work being proposed by Verizon. The action is unlisted pursuant to SECRE, so I'm recommending that the planning board assume lead agency without the need for coordinated review and issue a negative declaration. As far as the proposed work is concerned, per the plans, Verizon will be removing six existing antennas and then replacing those with six new antennas, removing 12 duplexers and installing three quad duplexers. That's all on the monopole. Within the existing wireless equipment compound on the grounds, proposed upgrades include removing three equipment cabinets and installing a delta cabinet, removing 12 remote radio head units, and installing nine new RHs. They're also removing 12 existing triplexers and installing three quad triplexers and three quad duplexers. All of the other antennas and equipment that are on-site will remain. Other documentation that was submitted with the application included the radio frequency electromagnetic energy analysis report. And this, as you all know, it takes into account the proposed equipment and all existing equipment on-site, models a worst-case scenario for all other carios on the, carriers on the existing tower. Based on the report that was submitted, all of the RF level exposures from existing and proposed antennas will be 10.9% of the MPE, which is the maximum permissible exposure limit, which is established by the FCC for the general population, and 2.18% of the allowable occupation limit. So the site with the proposed modifications will continue to be in compliance with the FCC limits as designed. We also received a structural analysis report, prepared and stamped by James Westbrook, who's a professional engineer. It analyzed the existing tower superstructure and its foundation and found that the tower has sufficient capacity to carry the proposed load configuration without any modifications needed. We also received a mount analysis, which was stamped by Peter Angelo Lutus, who's also a professional engineer. That analyzed the capacity of the existing mounts in conjunction with, with the proposed antenna modifications. And again, this report found that the existing mounts are sufficient for the final loading configuration, and those don't require any modifications. So I do have a resolution on to.
The antennas enclosed inside the tube or are they external?
No, they're external. It's not a stealth tower.
Is there a generator on-site?
Um, I don't believe Verizon has a generator on-site. There's no generator work proposed as part of this application.
No, I don't, I'd have to look, but there's, it's not part of this application.
Is that planned?
No. They're not swapping it or upgrading it or installing it. There may be one there, but it's not part of the application.
It's all the proper stamps and signatures from all the appropriate agencies.
Yeah, we have the professional engineers who signed up on all of the structural and mounting analysis. And then we had the, the RF ME report was stamped by a professional engineer as well.
Is this work is all complete?
No, it's proposed. So the, the tower and the existing equipment is all there, and other carriers have done work at the site before, which has been before the board. Verizon is just proposing some co-location.
It's been working a long time, and so I guess it's close. Looks like all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, and they even put the right name down. And they changed it from, Karen's been out of here for quite a, quite a long time, and I see in the January they did, they did put you down, Heather.
All right.
I don't have any questions.
All right. Everything's good. Everything's fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now we will go on to RH Hampton's LLC with Matt Charters. Sorry about that.
So Charles Cuddy here for record, Matt Charters, planner for the Town of Riverhead. All right, we have a five-lot subdivision for the property located at 308-310 Maple Avenue. If the board had the opportunity to review the subdivision map, this is in between Maple and Union, just north of the Long Island railroad tracks. Kind of rare that we see a subdivision of this many lots within the downtown. It's DC 5, which does allow a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. So you look at the map, lots 1, 2, and 5 are all about 5,000. Lot 3, about 6,300 square feet, and Lot 4 is 7,200 square feet. Unique about this is a good thing. There's existing utilities in the street, a 6-inch water main in Union Avenue and Maple Avenue, as well as sewer infrastructure in both streets. The reason I'm bringing this up is in terms of review of this project. Mr. Cuddy has requested that this is reviewed as a minor rather than a major subdivision. The threshold in the town code for a major review is generally five lots. The code does give the board the ability to vary or waive certain requirements, where it's either undue hardship or unnecessary hardship. From the staff's perspective, we don't really see this as a necessary thing to go through major. Major, you're generally looking at road infrastructure, heavy drainage infrastructure.
I have a question, Matt.
Yeah.
Has the highway superintendent looked at this to see if the roads need any improvement?
It had, it's been referred. We haven't received comments back yet.
Same thing with the town engineer?
Same thing with town engineer, yeah. So I would generally think that, you know, each lot would be served by, you know, their own.
Well, for example, I don't know if there were curbs there.
Yes, there's no curbs there. This might be an improvement they've. Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Cuddy, do you know if the town ever approached the applicant to purchase it for surface parking? Has the town ever been interested in this lot?
Not that I know of.
No. I'm a little surprised, because with the parking situation downtown, there's not a lot of places where you can get that much area for parking. I'm surprised the town wasn't interested in that.
This was owned by Petricelli previously. I don't, I don't know if they ever approached him, but my mind hasn't been.
Does it, does a low-income housing affect this, or is it too small?
It's, I think it's too small. What's the threshold for workforce housing?
10? Workforce housing would come into play if they're proposing the maximum density. In this case, in this case, they are. I'll look at the workforce housing and see how it would be applied. There may be a, the board has several different options when looking at the Workforce Housing Act. They can provide a density bonus on-site, they can provide it planned elsewhere, or they can provide, provide a payment in lieu of that density.
There might also be a threshold on the size of the number of lots, perhaps, with the income.
So it, it really applies to major subdivisions that are proposing the maximum number of units, which in this case, you know, the hazard rate density would be five lots. So I mean, that is one of the, one of the, it's, it's at the discretion, basically, of the planning board. We'll look at it in conjunction with the Community Development Agency, and the board would then make that determination as to what the most appropriate situation would be. Greg, can you definitely pick up our microphones? We have, all right. No more speaking off the microphone.
Sorry. If I could, I could summarize Greg's comments. Basically, what he had said was if, for major subdivisions that are looking at a full yield, there is either the requirement to provide workforce housing or payment in lieu of, at the discretion of the board. So that's something we can look at as we go through the review.
Also, these lots can be, can there be common driveways between two lots on each side? Or are they going to have their own separate?
There's, there's no proposal where the, where the driveways are going to go now. I think that's a valid point, Joe, if you'd want to require it. In this case, I've been on Union and Maple. They're not super busy. There's a lot of site distance. I don't know if we'd want to encumber the lots with common driveways. There, there is room to do individual driveways on all the lots. Mr. Cuddy, may I have any thoughts on that?
I think the house is there. Each one of the houses has its own drive. I mean, and there, the lots are basically the same size.
I'm sorry, are there houses there now?
There's no now.
There are houses to the north. Yes, not on these lots. I'm just saying in that neighborhood. There are houses on both sides of the street, and I'm saying there are lots that are basically the size.
All right.
This is not out of character. This is just Fitzpatrick.
Correct. I think it'll really serve a need in the area, too. There's not a lot of housing for, you know, this kind, you know, we see subdivisions of larger lots, you know, not for first-time homeowners, especially just could really.
Yeah. I'm surprised that the town doesn't have parking, because the district is too small to have a garage that everybody keeps talking about. The district's too small to be able to afford. They're going to have to acquire more surface parking. This would be a perfect spot.
Yeah.
It just said it's the other side of the railroad, too.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. I don't have anything else on this.
Other than that, I have a resolution for a public hearing and a secret neck deck. It's unlisted action. Not expecting any environmental impacts from this. And then just some conditions of approval, no further subdivision, and no wild line modifications without planning board approval, and just some map changes, some infrastructure by any official on the map. you need to show on the map.
Okay.
All right.
Very good, thank you.
Larry's been asking you to be here. Keep the papers off the microphones. We're getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
I have a new one.
Thanks, Mr. Cuddy.
Speak louder.
Staff, if you can, just try to speak a little louder.
Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. The load register.
Okay, let's move on to Hotel Indigo Sewer Pump Station with Greg Burkman.
All right, thank you. So this is a pretty easy one. This was actually an application that was submitted back in mid-2020, believe it or not. This is an application that's proposing a sewer pump station. It's going to be located on the Hotel Indigo property, behind the existing hotel to the north of the hotel. The sewer pump station's going to be installed. They are going to abandon the existing onsite sanitary system. They're going to connect to the Riverhead Sewer District. They did obtain, so it's actually, there's an easement that the Riverhead Sewer District obtained across the backside of the Tanger One property. So this sewer station is going to take the effluent from the hotel, pump it up through the Tanger property, and it's going to connect to the existing sewer infrastructure in County Route 58. The sewer district did obtain that easement in September of 20, no, I'm sorry, in February of 2019, and that was filed with Suffolk County Clerk. The applicant did get approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services in January of '21. That approval included the abandonment of the existing sanitary system as well as the installation of the existing pump. It's really very, you know, this is, there's only positives that are going to come from this. It's going to remove the effluent going into the groundwater, treat it through the sewer system. The only visible components of the pump station, there's going to be a small crane that's going to be used to lift and lower the sewer pump, and there will be one existing light fixture that's going to be installed. So we do have an approval resolution on some minor conditions that they need to identify the height and type of that exterior light fixture. So it needs to be dark sky compliant, and that before any building permits are issued, those changes need to be made to the plans.
Greg, I have, I have no objection to this project, but I want, I have some questions with regard to the sewers from sewer map.
All right.
Okay. You're having a map in front of you, I can't ask you those. I was hoping somebody from Yonah would be here. Okay, we'll start with the, the existing, what is it, right on top of the grease trap, and right next to it is something in blue. And I believe that's a new grease trap.
Yeah, so the notes-
It's not labeled as such.
So they are going to abandon the existing grease trap?
Yes.
And that, yeah, and that's located, that, there's a small note there, it just notes it as new cleanup, but I think that's probably accurate.
It's not a cleanup, it's a septic tank. It's a grease trap. Okay, now they're going to put the new sewer line in all the way down to the existing septic system?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now coming into that system is another blue line. Is that an existing line or is that going to be a new line?
So the blue lines-
The blue lines are new.
You've got, you've got two blue, yep, two blue lines, two lines coming off of the hotel.
Yes.
I guess to capture the effluent.
Okay, so they're new there?
So, yep, so those are new.
That's all.
They meet at the, you know, the location of the existing, you know, leaching field.
Okay.
And they'll go through the parking lot and connect to the sewer pump station on the back.
Okay, now let's go to the distribution manhole that's there, where all the lines come in and go out. There's another blue, on the, going out of the discharge, there's another blue line that seems to just go to the building.
Mm-hmm.
Don't know what that is. Is that existing or new? It's, it looks like a sewer.
So that is, so there's, I, I, so there's actually, it looks like three connection points. So you've got the one coming out with the grease trap.
Yep.
You've got the other line coming out, and then there is a, where it says the existing two-story brick hotel, that blue line, so I guess they're capturing the effluent from the three relocations.
Okay, so that, you think that would be existing there, right?
Yeah, and that, it was captured on the, yes, all of those lines are shown on the approved health department.
Now, the one, last question, the red line.
Mm-hmm.
Is that for the expansion of Phase Two or whatever they're calling it?
No, that red line is called out on the plans as the electric service line from generator emerg, so I guess that's-
Okay.
-to feed for backup power.
Okay, thanks. Unfortunately, as many engineering background, where everything's going, where it's coming from.
The reason this came up, I, I got a call from our home enforcement officer about two weeks ago. She noted that they were, it looked like they were getting ready for some construction back there, so I made a couple of calls and followed up. The applicant was under the impression that they have received approval for this, so I just wanted to get it finished before they go and-
I know he's been longing for this to start.
They've been, this, they've been toying around with the sewer pump and the sewer extension, believe it or not, since 2005.
Right.
They've, they've been toying around with it and mulling it over for a long time.
Yeah, well, they want to get started and what they want to do next.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Let's move on to public comments on the resolutions. Would anyone like to come up to comment on the resolutions?
Oh. Good afternoon, my name is Barbara Blas, and I'm from Jamesport. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak with you today. There certainly has been a lot of commitment, oh, I'm speaking on Resolution 2023-8. That's the HK Ventures. I know there's been a lot of commitment of resources, time, energy, and money for everyone involved, and it's greatly appreciated that you, I know you have the best interests of the community at heart, and the process itself, secret process, assists in helping you deliver the best possible outcome for all involved. We are familiar with what hasty decisions can do, they could lead to unfortunate, unnecessary, and costly delays. I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not even a wannabe traffic engineer, so I'll get that out of the, right out in front, but I do have a couple of questions on Ray DeBais's memo as he addressed the written comments that I provided. As long as we don't know that North Point is, or it could be one of two things, it could be either a sorting facility or a non-sort facility. Because we don't know, he has no direct information that it's one or the other, my question would be, why would you not include both sets of generation numbers so that you can compare them? It's supposed to be worst-case scenario, we're supposed to take the hardest look, and I just offer that rather than using the non-sort facility, why not put both sets of numbers in there for your review and analysis? The second thing that he did remind us of it, North Point's proximity to the Long Island Expressway, indicating, quote, "that the overwhelming majority of trips to and from that facility will use the expressway." We also know that currently there is no direct access from Riverhead Logistics Site to the expressway, which may or may not become a reality in my lifetime, but the impact to the local roads should be cumulatively assessed now with the conditions that are present at this time, and in my opinion, not when a traffic impact study for Riverhead Logistics is submitted to the town for review. I thought that's what this supplemental statement was designed to assess. Cumulative from worst-case scenarios for the projects that you listed, Riverhead Logistics was one of them. I thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Barbara, if the, if the timeframe of State Route 25 and Edwards Avenue has anything to do with the speed in which they would hook that up, I think that's the answer in
Good evening, Tocque Church and Greater Calvert-Tin Civic Association President. I would like to read a, a letter, it shouldn't take me too long, it looks like a one-page letter, and it is written to this board about HK Ventures. It's from Mr. Vinnie Schiavoni. He's spoken before this board before, and he had a little bit more to say. So dear members of the board, I first want to thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity to express concerns regarding HK DSEIS and their cumulative traffic impact analysis using ITE land code use of 150 for North Port, North Point Logistics at the January 5th meeting. Also want to thank you for the continued scrutiny of all these projects, and with seeking further comment from the traffic consultants regarding the written comments submitted by Barbara Blas. I was able to obtain a copy of the memo provided to the planning board from Raymond DeBais of LKMA. In his memo, DeBais states that LKMA's prior conclusions regarding trip calculations for the Riverhead Logistics Center remain valid based on an updated ITE land code of 155 for HiQ Non Sort Fulfillment Center. Frankly, the memo brings up more questions than answers. A few questions that come to mind include, one, has North Point notified LKMA or the planning board in writing of their intended use of their proposed logistics center? Two, if no, why is LKMA using specific land use data for HiQ fulfillment center non-sort versus sort? These two have drastically different outcomes. Three, if North Point has provided written confirmation of their intended use as a non-sort facility, have they relinquished their right to operate in another capacity? Four, if North Point wishes to alter their operation in the future, how does that impact HK once construction begins? Five, how will the town provide oversight and monitor to ensure this facility is operating as approved? Mr. DeBais also notes in his memo that LKMA is well aware of the 2016 study on a HiQ warehouse, along with the revised IET land codes, yet has never raised the issue or appears to not have educated members of the planning department on any of the information until the concerns were raised to them. This is critical information all planning department employees should be well-versed on in order to be competent enough to ask the right questions of developers and their own traffic consultants. Please consider the above questions, comments, as you continue to scrutinize HK, North Point, and all other projects that will ultimately destroy the hamlet of Calvert-Tin and change the face of Riverhead forever. Since the majority of the town board refused to take any action on development while the comprehensive plan is being completed, this board seems to be the only hope Calvert-Tin has to maintain its rural character, which is already being eroded. Again, thank you for the work you do. Thank you, Vinnie Schiavoni, Calvert-Tin. And this is an addition from, from my voice from the civic. I'd like to thank this board for the scrutiny you take and for how you have stepped up and voted 5-0 in order to protect our hamlet, and we'd like to offer this board any support possible that you feel you need in order to meet the ends that we've asked for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move on to the resolutions, please.
Move Resolution Number Three, for Verizon Wireless Revade at the Jamesport Firehouse, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Baer.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Naseski. Woski, yes.
Move Resolution Number Four. It's a secret resolution with a negative deck for the subdivision application of RH Hampton's.
Second to motion?
Vote, please, Baer.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Naseski. Woski, yes.
I move Resolution Five, RH Hampton's LLC to schedule a public hearing for the subdivision application, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Baer.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Naseski. Woski, yes.
Resolution 006, Hotel Indigo Sewer Pump Station, petition granting administrative approval. A site plan application seeking to install a sewer pump station at the site in an existing two-story hotel.
Second to motion?
Vote, please, Baer.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Naseski.
Aye.
Woski, yes.
I'll move Resolution Number Seven, approving the minor subdivision of Holly Tree Lane.
Second.
Vote, please, Baer.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Naseski.
Aye.
Woski, yes.
Move Resolution Number Eight for HK Ventures LLC, so moved.
Second.
Vote, please, Baer.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Nenaro.
Aye.
Naseski.
Aye.
Woski, yes. Do you have any public comments on all matters?
Hi, thank you for your time today, Mark Hobner, and I'm here on behalf of the Environmental Advisory Committee for Riverhead. And we've done a lot of work, and I've got a lot of experience and a lot of materials on what's coming at us in the future from the state of New York. I don't know how much you know about the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, or how much you've been involved with the reforming the Energy Vision 2030, Rev. 2030 coming from the governor's office. We've been involved with the New York State DEC Climate Smart Communities work, which has 120 line items that we can implement through human behavior programs and working with the different town departments. We're doing a food scrap recovery, diversion recovery, and reuse for compost right now in concert with the engineering department, with the Calvert-Tin Civic, North Fork Environmental Council, and the town itself. And we can do a lot of these programs for the future in regard to emissions reduction. And we're being faced right now with the Rev. 2030 of emissions reductions of 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2040 and so on. The reason that I'm bringing this up is that in order for us to start now would be much to our advantage in all of these. And I know I've talked to Matt about stretch code, we've talked about, we've had Nicerta representatives here to talk to us at large, and what I've realized too is that we're being offered a lot of grant money right now, bond rating improvements, just assistance at large. There's $4.2 billion coming to us from the, from the new, not the infrastructure bill, the, the Bond Act. We've got all sorts of opportunities here. And they're, they're so fresh right now that they don't even have the mechanism to write the checks for the programs that you want to bring to town. That's okay, but what I'm more concerned with is the cumulative effects of what we're doing. And you mentioned having two warehouses next to each other, that's not a problem, but what really triggered my interest in this in the last year, say, is the idea that we've got not just two warehouses, but five or six coming at us right now, to the tune of two and four and 10 and 12 and 14 million square feet. Why I'm concerned about that is not because of the pollution, the air pollution, the traffic, and all the rest of it, is because that at some point, the carrots are going to go away by 2030, which is only 84 months from now, the carrots are going to be replaced with sticks, and there are going to be penalties, and there are going to be responsibilities that we've got to meet. And what we're looking at, they don't have those in place either, which is why I want to really get ahead of the curve on all this stuff and get working. They are currently doing inventories of every town, every hamlet in the state of New York, and the greenhouse gases that are coming from each of our communities is going into a database. It's called the Greenhouse Gas Roll-Up, and that's going up to Nicerta, the Energy Research and Development Agency. And what they're going to be doing is assessing all of the residences, the restaurants, the hospitals, the colleges, all of the things that we're in line for taking care of food scraps right now are also going to be under scrutiny and inventorying for energy emissions. And what concerns me is like, if, if you think about 20 years ago when they were talking about what would the impacts be of Route 58 20 years from now? I've been here that long to know what the impacts are. The people who made those decisions may not be here anymore, some of them I, I'm sure are, but looking forward to the next 20, we need to be concerned for those. And it's not 20 years away, it's 84 months away. 2030 is roaring at us. So what I'd like to do is offer my help and assistance with our committee and the civics and whoever else to present. I gave a slide deck. It's nine slides, 12 minutes, very quickly, to this committee, to this board, as I did with the town board work session a few months ago. It's very simple. It'll help us kind of figure out why we're doing what we're doing. And maybe things would be different if we thought a little bit, I mean, 10 years ahead, eight years ahead, would we make the same decisions with this information? So at any point, if somebody could contact me, I'm in touch with the planning department, and certainly Jeff has me on speed dial at this point. But I'd like to offer our help and assistance in even just knowing what these requirements are, what these laws are about, to maybe help guide our decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something that you'd like to say?
Good afternoon. Jefferson Murford. Just wanted to let everybody know who's watching that next Thursday at 10:00 a.m., the town's comprehensive planning consultant, BFJ, will be attending the work session and giving an update on where they are in the process and the next steps going forward. So stay tuned.
Thank you.
Is that for the Calvert area or just in general, or?
Townwide.
Townwide.
Yep. They've already started looking at Calvert.
Yeah. Is there any movement on our town board as far as moratorium, or?
I'm sorry?
Is there any movement for the town board on moratoriums? Is there any talk?
There was a no vote for proceeding with a public hearing on it. So it's a dead point issue at this point.
Jefferson just reminded me of something. That same day, which I think the 27th, we were informed yesterday that the NYSERTA is coming down to make a presentation to the town board because the town board took a resolution off the floor last night to authorize an additional $10,000 to BFJ to study the battery energy storage systems and to help educate everyone on the issues, concerns, opportunities associated with best NYSERTA is coming down on that same day. So I thought it would be important for you to know that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, it doesn't look like we have anyone else to come up, so...
Move the January 5th minutes of the board. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We do not have any other business, no correspondences. Our next meeting date is Thursday, February 2nd, 2023, at 6:00 p.m.
Have a good night, everyone.
Close the meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? As town boards.